Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I know it's a little different on the agenda, but we're accommodating my partner here. He doesn't feel that well. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We'll call.
You're next.
Present.
Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Vasquez?
Here.
Counselor Padilla?
Here.
Counselor Lucero?
Let the record show that Counselor Lucero is absent tonight.
He's on his way.
Provo the agenda.
I make a motion, we'll approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Paliya?
Yes.
Citizens to adjust the council. Check party.
Is this mic on? You can hear me without the mic, can't you?
He'll turn it off for you.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. One, you know, you put, got the birdie up down there, at the mining museum. And we recycle our paper. About every two months, we need to drive through and back up to the rack to load the paper in pickup. And also, like, we had the Chamber Bagwood this weekend. We had a lot of equipment that we keep in the basement, and some of it's pretty heavy. And I'd like to have permission to back up, to load it, so we won't let it carry up and down that hill. So then, two things, I appreciate.
How often do you talk about doing that, Jack? It's not an everyday deal, right? How often do you talk about doing that? Twice a year?
It's about every two months on the recycle of paper. And on the other, the Chamber Bagwood. And then, we have the Fourth of July, we have a bunch of stuff down there. There's about three things that we need, or we need to.
We'll open that gate for them. We'll open that gate for them.
Huh?
That's why, we'll open it, that's why we put a gate there.
Yeah, well, I can open it. But anyhow, thank you for that. And the other thing is, our billboard, it's wrinkled.
The legislature's supposed to be getting us some cash for this this time? Because that's their state building, that's their state sign? We've had a long, hard discussion about that sign?
The billboard downstairs?
He was talking about the ROTC.
Oh, sorry about that. I thought you were talking about your sign out here in front of here.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
The billboard down next to the interstate. It's wrinkled, and the people, you can't see their faces. Surely to God, you can get a picture and get better prints than that.
Yeah, we can.
You can look all over the state, and you don't see some people with you, you can't even tell who they are.
So, a recommendation came to me this week that we put something on that board that is tourist-related, encouraging people to come into town to see some attraction.
But that's already in town. It's not out on the freeway. It's right here next to Harries.
No, but I mean to drive in, you know, that there's things further in.
I'm with Jack, I think we need to acknowledge them high school kids that have won so many championships and so many, I mean, period. Sorry, those kids have done wonderful things, and we're probably fixing to lose that program. And all that's gonna be is another thing
Yeah.
to write that program off. Because Gunny Garcia is retiring.
Yes, he's retiring.
And it's not looking like the Marines, none of the Marines want to come here. And the way our economy is going around here, why would they?
But you're getting, and he would get them together to get you a good picture that you can get printed and put on, where you can see the people's face.
We'll work on that.
Okay, and they win the national trophy about every year, and this one of Dallas stuff about, it was international. They beat Germany, France, England, Canada.
I'm with you, Jack. I'm with you all the way on that.
Okay, get busy.
I'm with you all the, I've been busy trying to save jobs, Jack. That's what I've been worried about. I mean, me and you, we're retired, we ain't gotta worry about that crap with these other people.
I work every day.
Well, I do too. That's my whole point. No pay worth it, damn, but I work every day.
I take it, I talk to a lot more people than you do, though.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, thank you.
I talk to a lot more politicians, unfortunately.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mary, what's your last name? Valuer?
Mar.
Mary.
Our Mary.
Step up, our Mary. Oh, wait a minute, you want to speak on Jacob's contract?
No, no, we don't want to make them wait till the end.
Oh, yeah, that'll work.
Um, I, last meeting, there was a comment that the council only hears complaints from the staff. So, Mary is actually a staff, but she's not Mark and I, but she works out in the field. She's our flowerbed maintainer and shrub maintainer and.
And I've had a whole bunch of people tell me you should be employee of the year for the last two years that you've been here.
I'll drink to that.
Okay, a ton of people.
So, Mary wanted to share some of her experiences.
Right. I have real big problems with Jacob's fixing the sprinklers in my flowerbeds. They totally ignore me, or they're, as I call him, they're water boy. He sees me come and he takes off. I think he's afraid of me. To me, it's, oh, he said it wasn't working.
It's working.
It's working.
Chris broke it.
It's broken.
Well, I can shout.
You gotta talk right into it.
It's working now?
Okay, I'll start again. But he, I don't know about this kid, I call him a kid. Because I just can't comprehend why he won't go around and fix the sprinklers. And I've complained and complained for the last two years. And then, the real kicker was up at the cemetery. Where they didn't water my shrubs or the plants. And I complained about that. The only one that really took care of him was Raymond, before he got sick. He made sure my planters were watered, he made sure everything was okay. Then he got sick. Everybody just kind of wrote it off. And I didn't take care of the shrubs before until I got a good look at them. Because Laura wanted me to take care of all the planters. Take out all the artificial flowers because they get tacky, which they did. And then, I got a look at those shrubs. There was elm trees growing in them. I had to use a saw to cut them off. And there was weeds and grass and goat heads. And then, on top of that, they didn't water it last summer. And I had a lot of shrubs that died. I had people come and ask me, did those shrubs get a disease? Is that why they're dead? I said, yeah, Jacob's, they didn't water it. They go, oh, that's so terrible. And they were the real pretty blue shrubs.
So, Mary was hired about three years ago because I had gotten so many complaints from citizens about our flowerbeds on the ends of town, on various places. And so, we hired Mary because I was worried that maybe we had too much on Jacob's plate. And so, we wanted to show we were willing to have our staff help out. And I kid you not, Mary is worth five out in the field.
Thank you.
She definitely is.
I have a lot of people that stop, especially up at the cemetery, and tell me they've never seen those shrubs and they look so nice.
Well, Mary, you'd be amazed, like I said, how many phone calls I get about you. And I have yet to get a negative one. Get a bunch of negative phone calls. Every week, I get negative phone calls. Positive phone calls, they come, not as often as the negative ones. I've never, ever received a negative phone call about you, nothing but positive. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, without a doubt. Barbara Wesley.
You're not looking to have no water, you know? I'm a guy that doesn't.
I'll work with him, take care of all of them. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, without a doubt. Barbara Wesley.
You're not looking to have no water, you know? I'm a guy that doesn't.
I'll work with him, take care of all of them.
There are two things that I'd like to address. Number one, I'd like to introduce to the city council and to our community Carolyn Newton. She's the new chair for the Animal Care Center. One of the things that Carolyn has been doing at her own expense for many, many, many years, even before the new Animal Care Center was established.
Last meeting.
I know, but she's done this at her own expense for years. Transporting, loading, all of these things that she has done without any compensation because she cares about what is going on in our community. So, I want to just welcome Carolyn. And Carolyn, do you have something you want to say?
I just have one question. I know that the new animal ordinance was submitted to the board. Have you guys had a chance to review?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it hasn't been submitted to the board as of yet.
It hasn't yet?
No.
I must have misunderstood, I thought it was submitted last month.
No.
So, I will ask.
It should assume we're kind of having the attorneys looking at it and proofreading it to make sure we're not violating any state laws.
Okay. If we have more animals coming in than we can get out, so the new ordinance would help us out quite a bit.
What, what portion of it would address that?
The spay and neuter. And having ID tags and the rabies shots and vaccinations, a lot of it would help.
And that's spay and neuter, are we changing it from every dog that we pick up? Because when you pick up pedigree dogs and you spay them, make them neuter them, when they're trying to make business out of it, that's wrong. And I will never support that.
Well, so long as they have a kennel license.
That's fine, but I mean, I've got, I've got four dogs. I got two rescue, I got two purebreds. The rescue dogs are spayed and neutered. My purebreds aren't.
Yeah, I understand that. I agree, some people want purebreds over the muds, but there's a lot of people in the community.
Well, the muds are far better dogs.
They are. But there are far more dogs in the community that need to be spayed and neutered that would help out the population at the animal shelter.
One of the things that she transported on the last transport, well, two transports ago, was seventy-nine dogs. The next day, the kennel was full again. After they cleaned out the kennel, there were all those dogs back again. Last week, she transported, I think, twenty-nine again. So, they're full. And so, we can't keep up, I think there were a hundred and eight.
Well, there comes a point, Ms. Wesley, when you can't keep up, that those dogs are gonna have to be euthanized. That's the bottom line. There comes a point, when there's too many, that you gotta get rid of them. And if we can't transport them all, guess what that means?
And that's where the ordinance.
And it's just a hard reality. It's a hard reality in life, that when you're dealing with that many stray dogs, and with everybody losing jobs and stuff, it's only gonna get worse.
Yep.
Make no doubt about that. You gotta have that sight that sees the whole box, the whole picture, not just those little, one little thing like it. Okay?
We'll get that on real soon. I know we wanted to get that approved before Counselor Reynolds leaves because she was so instrumental in helping work on that, and we wanted to acknowledge her there.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
But thank you for what you do.
Yes.
We do appreciate, so believe me, I'm not into killing dogs. But there comes a point.
I agree. We're just a huge county and a tiny, tiny town.
Exactly.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You say you transported seventy-nine animals to Arizona someplace?
Yes, I did.
And the next day, you had another batch. Were these animals coming from our own town here or?
Town, the county.
They all come from Sebel County.
Everywhere.
Most of the animals come in from Laguna and Grants.
Might be time to start charging the county a little bit more. Looking at it now, when we come up with our new contracts and stuff, could you? Most definitely. Anything else, Barbara?
Yes, there is. Last week, Cindy Reynolds had brought up some things that she had done. I don't know Cindy except as an acquaintance, I don't know her personally. And there are two council people here that have taken their time and their money to contribute to various things. One is Manny, and you've purchased paint for the community pantry. And Cindy, you have gone out and purchased paint and painted the floor. You've done all of these things and given up your stipend for the things that you believe to be important to the community. And my question is, would any of you council people give up your stipend to do the things that she has done? Not one of you said thank you, and I think that she needs a tremendous thank you for all that she has attempted to do in our community.
Barbara, that's where you're wrong, I thanked her, okay?
Oh, I have a little fan club for you.
Okay, sorry.
But Cindy, thank you so much.
And here's something that you need to hear about, okay? Because of what she said this last time at our last meeting, I went around and I asked the people at the caboose, what is Cindy talking about? They said, she just wants to pay for everything, she doesn't want to make the community build together by each buddy kicking in their own bit of money and whatnot. This is, hang on, hang on. All I can do is tell you what they told me, Cindy.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I heard your side here, so I went to ask their side. And that's what they gave me. Period. They said, see, she just wants to pay for everything and do everything, and we're trying to build a community here with everybody helping out. And we told her that, and she got all pissed off and left. And that's what they said to me.
They had a hard time getting volunteers.
Oh, yes, we do.
And the volunteers left because nothing was being done.
In closing, I'd like to say, Cindy, thank you so much for all you've attempted to do in our community.
Okay, my name is Reba Don Cook, I go by Don. Back last year, January sixteenth, I went over a manhole that was not properly covered. The lid came up, did twenty-five hundred dollars worth of damage to my car. I filed with the city, the city told me to go to Jacob's. I went to Jacob's, I went rounds and rounds with Jacob's. I would email them, they would not email me back. I would call them, they would not call me back. I would call Ms. Laura, she would get a hold of them, then they would call me back. I did not get, I had to pay, go through my own insurance to get my car fixed. They wanted me to fill out forms where I was gonna have to claim the twenty-five hundred dollars on my taxes. I told them I was not doing that. It was very frustrating. I finally got the check, I want to say October, November, this happened in January. And Ms. Hotamil is the one that helped me, because Jacob's was giving me the runaround. They told me I had to fill out this form, this form. And I refused to fill out a form for twenty-five hundred dollars that I was gonna have to claim on my taxes when I had to pay five hundred dollars out of my own pocket to get my car fixed. So, why was I gonna do that? So, finally, I want to say, end of October, beginning of November, the gentleman that works for Jacob's showed up, showed up at my work, and I had to sign a form that I wasn't gonna go after them for anymore to get my check to be reimbursed, to send to my insurance. They're rude, they don't want to deal with you. It was very upsetting.
And I, as a city manager, was very embarrassed because I felt like Jacob's is our family, they're part of our team. And I felt embarrassed because I felt they were responsible for what happened to your car because of not securing the manhole, where I had information that they had just worked on that prior to your hitting it. Our insurance would not cover it. Our insurance has gotten to the point where if there's something a contractor is responsible for, they turn it back to the contractor, and I don't blame them. And so, it was very frustrating, a lot of time taken for us to get Ms. Cook reimbursed for something I felt was due to her.
Her enough, is it O'Shea?
Yes.
They were awesome, they're, the only ones that were nice to me and helped me. And Ms. Hotamil would email me, hey, have you heard anything, have you talked to them? And I would let her know. And then, I actually, they said, they told her they were waiting on my insurance to be back to them. So, I called my insurance, and they're like, no, we've never even heard from them. My insurance is State Farm. They're like, no, we have never even heard from Oga. I was like, okay. They're like, from now on, even if Ms. Hotamil wants to talk to you, tell her to contact us. So, I sent them the email, and I let Ms. Hotamil know, hey, contact my insurance because we're not getting nowhere, so they're gonna go out now. So, it was about a month, a month and a half after that, they finally, the guys show up at my work with a check.
So, the first response that Ms. Cook received in writing was from Jacob's attorney saying that the contract the city had was not with Jacob's, it was with all in mine. And that really angered me.
That's where they change her name every other night.
And actually, I never received that letter. She received it. O'Sha received it, or O'Shea received it and sent it to me. They never sent me that letter.
So, I rallied on her behalf. I just, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars is a lot of money to individuals, it would be to me as well. And I'm sure I probably make more than you do. And that's, that's a lot of money for any of us. And, you know, I, we get lawsuits all the time for things we're not responsible for, and I'm sure Jacob's does too, and I know they were trying to be careful that, you know, they're not getting liability for something they're not responsible for. But to me, it was very clear, personally, that I felt like it was very clear it was their responsibility.
And we even took pictures of the lid of the manhole, and there was spots taken out. And my boyfriend is a plumber, welder, you know, that's what he does for a living. And he told me that lid was not secured properly because of the gaps. And I sent that to Jacob's, and I told him, well, you know, this lid was not properly on there, that's why it popped up. Because those lids are not supposed to pop up. My front tire hit it, it popped up underneath my back tires and jacked up stuff in the back.
Well, and I had knowledge that work had just been done there, not too long before this happened, so.
That weekend, I believe.
There was a sewer plug at the apartments on that road. And work had been done there, so it made sense that that manhole had been opened for that.
And they tried to tell me that they weren't in that manhole, they were in a different manhole. Is also what they told me, that they were not in that manhole, that it must have been the apartments that opened that one. So, it was a runaround, and it was stressful. It took over seven months for me to get paid for my car.
Well, believe me, there ain't nobody working in any apartment building that's gonna go pull a manhole.
Well, I know that.
And there's nothing in a manhole that's gonna help anybody in the apartment building.
Correct. I'm just letting you know what runaround and the frustration I went through.
I could sit here and tell you the stories of how I've gotten as the mayor. Okay?
I can imagine.
But that's another story.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for taking your time to come here and share your story.
Anybody got any questions for her?
Where did this, where did this happen?
Right over in front of Los Almitos, right in front of the, right in front of Los Almitos where you pulled in. The new entry of Los Almitos, that manhole right there in front of the apartments and between them.
Thank you. That creates a hardship for people. What is she doing without a car or a ride to pick me up?
Right, you were without a car?
I was without a car, yes, I.
She should have big compensation.
They told me not to drive it, they told me.
Yeah, everything should have.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I just, you know, I don't want to beat Jacob's up in public, but the council wanted to hear what complaints you were getting from other people, and we get plenty, so I asked a few people to share. I don't know if Mr. James is here, if he happened to show up, but maybe not. But thank you, Ms. Cook, I appreciate your sharing your story.
Thank you very much.
Did you have something?
May I go, because I have other questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else out there want to talk? Anybody? Who's with him? Charter compliance, anybody want to talk about our charter compliance? Or in compliance? Hallelujah. This is two weeks in a row, Brett, we've been able to say that. Provo the regular city council meeting minutes. Any corrections?
Yes, I have some corrections. During our discussion.
Read them out.
During our discussion with Jacob's, that Laura made a comment that I was in Jacob's pocket. That was omitted on the city council minutes.
No, if you look at the, I reviewed the recording that this gentleman recorded, and I didn't name you specifically. I said I was worried about some of you being in the city council or being in Jacob's pocket. I didn't name you personally. Later, in a different discussion, when we were talking about why Jacob's wasn't present, I said, well, they know Counselor Vasquez has their support. I never said that they had you in your pocket, and you're welcome to go back and review the video because I've viewed it myself.
Let me read this. During Jacob's contract discussion, city manager Laura Hotamil told.
That's the newspaper's quote.
You have, you have.
That's the newspaper, Manny.
That is it.
Go back and review the video.
Go back to your minutes, read your minutes, dude. Show me in the minutes. You're wanting to make a correction to the minutes. We don't correct what the paper says, the paper says whatever's gonna sell a newspaper.
The video's on YouTube.
It is on YouTube.
And I taught it word for word, so I knew exactly what I said.
So, you did not, you did not accuse me of?
No, I did not. And then, later, you said, you're accusing me of taking bribes, and I said, no, I am not.
The mayor said, no, that's, that's not what you meant. Period.
I don't remember him saying that.
Yes, and he did, he got off his chair and made a point that, no, that's not what you meant when I said that you, you were accusing me of taking bribes, and that was, and Jacob's pocket.
So, I did not name you specifically, Counselor Vasquez.
Look at that, and that's all it says.
Yeah, I, I know, and I was disappointed that the paper made a quote that they, I know Mr. Ford records his, his stuff, but I viewed it on the video, and it's on YouTube. Anybody that wants to see it, YouTube, grant city council meeting, our January.
I have a copy of it already. Why, because I've already looked at it. And so, I would like an apology from you.
For something she didn't say?
She meant it. No, she meant it to me. She meant it, directed it to me, that's what I'm getting at.
No, I did not direct it at you.
So, who's the councilman that you were directing?
I didn't say the councilman, I said.
She said the council.
I'm worried that some of the council.
Members of the council.
I wasn't directing it.
I'm one of the councilmen.
Well, so am I.
So, you're the mayor.
I'm still a member of the council, Manny.
So, I really took that personal, all right?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry you took it personal, it wasn't meant to be personal at you. I said the council, and that's what was in my mind, was the council. In fact, Counselor Reynolds, did I not ask you if you were meeting on the side when I talked with you? So. I did. So, I was considering all of you.
So, the other thing is, is you said that.
You're reading the newspaper, I would not.
Manny, we're asking for answers to the minutes.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, correction, something else was said that.
Where in the minutes?
I meet with Edward, I meet with Edward a lot of times just because we're friends.
Where in the minutes does it say that? Where in the minutes does it say that, Manny? I can't find it.
I will have to go back to my video, I didn't, I didn't get everything written down from the video, okay?
So, do you not meet with Edward, and do you not call him?
I called him. We talked about.
I get confused, I meet with Edward, I call Edward.
Well, and so does Fred, and I don't know, Rick probably does too, right? I mean, Edward tells me every time he gets a call from any of you, requesting, you know, asking back about.
Then he calls there, he calls Laura to make sure that we're not breaking the law by doing it, and by directing him to do something behind Laura's back, guys. That's why she ca, he calls her. Come on, man.
I don't have a problem.
Right.
I just took this personally, because that's what I'm saying to you, okay?
Well, I'm sorry you took it personal, because I didn't intend that I was talking about all of you when I made that comment.
And I guarantee you, I probably called you more than anybody, right, Edward? I guarantee you, I call him coming into town at midnight, guys. When I find a water leak.
So do I, when I find a water leak, I call him.
Yeah, but I'm at midnight, twelve thirty, one o'clock in the morning, Manny.
Fred just called him Friday, and he didn't answer, right?
No, 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 he was on a talk, and then I called.
I don't got to drink. He called me this morning, so we did talk.
I called him this morning. I don't know, I wasn't here. I want to take a motion to approve the minutes.
I move the minutes, approve the minutes, the city council minutes for January twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Second. You're not gonna second the minutes, Manny?
I am not.
And you can't second it because you weren't here, then I'll second the minutes, okay? Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
No.
Counsel, Mayor Hicks votes yes. Your vote abstained because you weren't here. That'll work. Next. Cemetery board reapplication for Gloria Chad. Anybody got any problems with her?
I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yeah.
Counselor Vazquez, Counselor Palia?
Yes.
Airport Advisory Board, Daniel Rogers.
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers isn't in the company out there? Would you like to say anything? Stand up and say, I wanna be in the board.
I'm Daniel Rogers, a armed veteran, a local business owner, and I'd just like to, uh, serve our community. And just like we have, uh, money traveling through on I-40, there's an. Money traveling up there as well, we just need a place for it to come down, a place it's safe, and, uh, we can smooth it, make it as smooth as possible for that money to come down into grants and help our local economy.
I love your attitude. Any questions for Daniel?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, Gallup has an airport, it is not as well maintained, and they will not have the traffic that we have here in our airport.
They don't have a runway like ours either, Barbara, they can't land Air Force One, we can.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I know, and you also do the Osprey as well here.
That's right.
So I want to commend the airport, um, the leadership out there, and they're doing a super job because, uh, Gallup used to have flights to, uh, Phoenix and to Toronto, they. So we do here.
Thank you very much, Barbara, uh, Daniel, thank you for replying, and on that note, I will entertain a motion to approve Mr. Rogers for the airport board.
Make a motion to approve Mr.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Roundwater monitoring authority for CBS with Soder Miller and Associates.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Ms. Manager, uh, before you is a proposal for CBS contract with. They've been taking care of, uh, our monitoring laws for, uh, past few years, and they. We need a third-party, uh, engineering firm to to, uh, take on. For you is the proposed amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and seven cents for quarterly sampling through to twenty-twenty.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Second. Counselor Reynolds? Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Palia?
Thank you, Mayor.
A goal for gravel base course.
Before you is a proposal, uh, the lowest bid is twenty dollars per ton to CNE concrete. Uh, we're getting a blanket amount for a quarter million, this will be used towards construction funds, and it will be, uh, used as needed for for the roads.
This is about the door?
Yes.
Questions? I wanna take a motion.
Well, I have one.
Go ahead.
For the CNE, CNE concrete, for the proposal. It has a two-hundred and thirty-one thousand, two-hundred dollars, and it has eighteen thousand, seven-eight-five for the New Mexico grocery tax. It is calculated at eight-point-one-two-five, and they have six-point-eight-one-two-five. So it is, so it's not, it's not.
It's not accurate?
Well, yeah, the, yeah, the the amount is accurate if you use eight-point-one-two-five. But the amount isn't accurate if you use six-point-eight-one-two-five.
I see, there's a, there's a typo there.
I think so, I, that's what I'm saying, that's right.
This would be invalidated if the, if the totals are incorrect, I believe.
But she said they're correct.
But if the totals are correct, I think we're okay with a typo.
Yeah, the only typo is at, it is at eight-point-one-two-five.
And what is the state's eight-one-two-five, right?
Ours is eight-point-one-two-five.
Ours is eight-point-one-two-five.
Which they need to use to see.
Yeah, the CNEs are within the city limit.
So the amounts are correct, but the percentage is wrong.
Who typed that up, you?
No, sir, it came straight from CNE.
And the EGO guy is six-point-seven.
Yeah, I I know what you're saying, I gotcha. It's just a typo, no big deal.
I'm sure I didn't type this out.
Yeah, it's it's just a typo, no big deal, okay? Any other questions?
In case something happens.
Yes. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for the gravel.
I make a motion to approve, uh, two forty-nine, nine eighty-five, base course.
Second.
I second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Palia?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Equipment for four new police SUVs.
Mayor, Council, uh, in December, we received three bids to equip the, three, four SUVs?
Four.
Four SUVs.
Four.
Uh, from MHQ, WAC Outfitters and American Emergency Products, AEP, and the low bidder was WAC Outfitters, in the amount of fifty-six, nine ninety-eight, point eighty-two, including that includes tax. Your support would be appreciated, this is going from the Capitol Mall from last year, and that's supportive.
Make a motion to approve? Second. Second. Counselor Reynolds? Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Palia?
Yes.
Okay. Talk to me, baby.
CBSG, we had three public hearings, uh, attendance was all right, there was a few at each meeting. They were knocking on doors.
Was that like our city council meetings? You know what we might wanna start doing on that, is hold the, the meetings.
Prior to that.
If we're gonna have something like this, we'll hold them prior to to the city council meeting, and we'll have a lot bigger audience.
However, we did receive good input.
Yeah, I understand that.
So anyway, there was project ideas, all the way from lights on Roosevelt Avenue, uh, drainage project, there's a lot of drainage issues in our town, obviously. So, um, anyway, the three projects that we, Laura and I. See, I don't have my ducks in a. Okay, so we have the main. Three projects, we have a drainage issue on East Sage, which we're all familiar with, I think that that's a qualifying area, but that one, uh, the low to moderate income survey would have to be just done in that area, because there's no community facilities around there. The other good idea that came up with, uh, that we're recommending possibly is Roosevelt Avenue, the, uh, east side.
By the hospital and all that down there.
Just roadway improvement, sidewalk, that kind of thing, so, and that would qualify for a citywide, because there's a lot of city, it's like a business district, so, and grants overall does qualify for low to moderate income.
Yeah, that's gonna be worse.
The other one is Washington Avenue, the next phase, you know, we're doing Jefferson now, and the next phase would be Washington Avenue. So Laura and I met, we we discussed in detail, uh, we done it right, we just didn't pick something, but we we thought that the best project for twenty-twenty CBS application would be Washington Avenue Phase Two, we're going to DOT for construction funding. Uh, but it's not gonna probably supply it all, uh, it's gonna be about a three-million-dollar project, what's that? Uh, it's from, from the bridge to Antrim. There's been drainage issues there for years.
All the way down around the school?
Yes.
All the way through there.
And it makes sense, because they'll be building a new school here in about three, four years, so, anyway, we'll work collaborative.
Correct.
To Antrim.
It would allow us to have sidewalks in that area and kind of clean that all up, um, we have a lot of foot traffic, a lot of car traffic, um, it serves the middle school for people going that way, it serves the high school for people going the other direction. There's two churches, there's a community center and the school in that neighborhood.
Currently, on Jefferson, just, just to give you an idea, the, I think the drainage pipe in that area was about eight inches. It's been upgraded to, I think, three foot in some areas and four foot in some areas, so, obviously, that's been an area that's just been drenched. But to these projects, we are moving the water to the Arroyo quicker. So anyway, our recommendation is Washington Avenue Phase Two.
Questions?
Laura's and I.
I'll entertain a motion for Washington Jefferson Phase Two for the CBSG.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Palia?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I'll let you do. Jacobs' contract amendment.
I said, before we do that, I got a question for the chief.
Which chief? Fire chief or?
Police chief.
You don't wanna wait till the end of the meeting for comments?
I don't wanna go waiting. Since who's best of cars there?
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Steve, uh, how many cars have you got that are not operating? You could use.
I think we have one on the side of our building, the rest are all spares, and so there's like one vehicle, I think there's two at the MLC that were here before I came in.
But you can use those vehicles if you need them that way.
The ones that we had, we counted as spares, yeah, they're the old Crown Victorias and Ash, they run pretty good, but yeah, we we have those.
The reason I'm saying this, Steve, is because I was at a basketball game Saturday at the high school, and I know that the high school pays for our yield for security and stuff like that. But the marching guy takes care of it inside, there was three or four people inside from your department. We all left about four o'clock coming up Second Street South, coming to, you know, you're going twenty-five, thirty miles an hour. The guy driving the SUV from your department and a guy driving a sedan passed me like a bat out of heck going like this with all the traffic, and then they turned around around here and Steven's, no lights, no emergency lights.
Okay.
Those, you know, they shouldn't do that, because there's a lot of cars coming out of the game, you know?
Right, definitely not.
There are a lot of guys, kids and stuff like that, those guys, I could see an emergency, but even in an emergency, they shouldn't leave the school like that.
Well, I'm, uh, Ms. Councilman, what what day was this?
Saturday at four o'clock, it was a day game.
It was a day game Saturday, okay, I'll find out, who was working?
And I mean, I don't really know, but you know, it was a safety issue that we.
You better tell, I'm not mad, it's our insurance, we're the ones gonna get sued.
Now, they have, they have license sirens respond to emergency calls.
There are people from those Luna, so they're coming out of the high school, slow, coming up, you know, by. And they were passing there, I didn't like that, I I got, I didn't get the number, I should have.
Now, we'll find out.
No, right, we gotta, we gotta share.
That's what I'm saying about the cars, if they're gonna treat them that way, we can't give you new cars every time you come by if you wanna drive them like that. I can see emergencies, you're running out twenty-four hours a day, I I'll buy all that, but I've used like that guy, a lot of people saw it.
Yeah.
Cause they, I saw it and I forgot about it, but we stopped with the eat, and they reminded me right there.
I will look into it, sir, and I will report back.
Thank you, Steve. Don't go nowhere, though.
No, I'm here.
Yeah. Okay. Got anything else? Please. Okay. You remember Mr. Jacobs' contract?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, as we discussed last time, there's been components of the contract that we targeted that are not being completed or not being completed well, and so we picked these to, uh, amend the contract, amendment number three, and nix those, some of those include the flowerbeds. We've already hired Mary, uh, she's been on for three years, and so, uh, it seems like an easy thing, there's also Kuanis in Miracle Park, which no longer have irrigation systems, so those are some of the minor things that we've included in the amendment, some of the larger items are, uh, the sanitary sewer system, which hasn't had preventative maintenance, there's, uh, some water flushing elements, some valve exercising, and also, uh, fire hydrants, there are seven hydrants that are included in your packet, and so there's, there's just some, uh, low-hanging fruit, if you will, that we could eliminate, and so because of this, we've created six positions, Mary's is included in those six, and, uh, and some of that is because of the Siemens project, where there were four hundred, uh, risers that need to be installed, and so, uh, these, this crew's really taken the bull by the horns, and they've installed about two-hundred-and-seventy, there's about a hundred and thirty that are left. And so, uh, from the contract of one-point-six-four million roughly, there would be a reduction of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand to fund these six positions. So what, I'm sorry. Um, so what we're asking for tonight is amendment number three to be accepted in its form, and, uh, the contract would be reduced by two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Questions? Jacobs? You guys got anything to say? David? Who are you?
Good evening, Mayor Hicks, my name is Matthew Keer, I'm, uh, with Jacobs Engineering, and, uh, I support the Ja, the Grants team here in Jacobs, and it was part of the negotiation of the contract with Edward and the city administration. And so I would just like to, uh, introduce myself as part of the team member here to.
How long have you been on the team member here?
I've been with Jacobs for eight years, and recently, two thousand and nineteen, in April, that I was, uh, assigned to support the Jacobs team here in Grants.
And where do you live at?
I live in Rio Rancho.
Is that why I've never met you?
Possibly so.
I mean, I'm here every day, and you're part of the team, and I've never met you, the only person I've ever dealt with is Edward, that's kind of amazing to me, and it speaks loads and volumes to what I'm talking about on this contract here, buddy.
Well, it's a pleasure to meet you this evening, Mr. Mayor. So my, my intent of being here this evening is to, uh, to help understand that our intent and desire is to support, uh, the the city's needs, and, uh, as a longstanding, uh, community member and and group here in the community of Jacobs, our our team members were here to continue to to help build and and change and and improve our relationship with the city of Grants, and to open and to have communication for improvement, and to understand the the concerns and the frustrations that maybe have been expressed that to help help move forward.
Do you got a problem with what we're doing with the contract?
As far as I'm understanding the contract, uh, that that is being presented.
Answer the question, do you have a problem with what we're doing with the contract?
I, 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 I do, and I'm trying, I'm trying to answer the question. So, the proposed contract that we submitted on January seventh, uh, was a proposed contract that we, uh, strive to understand the needs of the city. And so in our, our proposal was to help facilitate and, uh, reduce our scope that was requested initially uh, for desires for a water improvement program, uh, for the city, and there was a a goal amount, a targeted amount that was expressed to us, they would like to have the scope reduced, uh, to accommodate that, uh, targeted financial amount. We returned with a proposal to help, uh, gain that amount for the city and exceeded that amount. The, that proposal that we submitted was declined, and therefore, uh, the city strived to help us understand more clearly what they were seeking, and so that they were able to help us understand, um, on the contract, what items they wanted to reduce. So from there, we, we strive to do our best efforts to accommodate those needs and to support the city and the things that they desired, and so we, we returned with a contract amendment on, uh, January seventh of this year, after negotiations for several months, to to accommodate and facilitate that scope reduction. It was shortly thereafter, uh, that I had, uh, submitted, uh, an email to to understand if there's any questions or comment, and then it was replied that it was going before city council, uh, for approval. So this contract that's here before you is a contract that was submitted to us in response to our submittal, and we had not had a chance to, uh, review and negotiate the terms and conditions of this contract.
Well, here's where I'm at with this, okay, you guys are under breach of contract and have been under breach of this contract for years. I've got work orders on fire hydrants for five-hundred-and-seventy-five days, that's over a year, that's almost two years. Explain that to me, guys, somebody, please, how do we have a work order that's laying there for five-hundred-and-seventy-five days when we've got fire hydrants right there in the, in your inventory? Explain it to me.
I, I understand your frustration, Mayor.
I mean, yeah, frustration is not the right word, buddy, okay? We're talking millions of dollars that we give you guys, and you cannot do the job. Frustration doesn't even cover where I'm at here, and it's been that way since I came on this council sixteen years ago, okay? That's how long we've been dealing with this, and that's how long it's taken me to get it to this point, because everybody else that sat up here, they played free golf, and they went and had dinners, and it was all good, okay, it's not that way no more.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm here to let you know that my commitment is to help, uh, improve and support our team in Jacobs and deliver the contract that we agree upon, and that we hope that we can negotiate through, uh, these terms and conditions so that we can satisfy your needs, the city's citizens' needs, and have a good working continued relationship.
So based on my records.
Wait a minute, that doesn't, that doesn't even touch on the five-hundred-and-seventy-five days on a fire hydrant. If we've got a fire down there and somebody's house burns down, we're liable because you guys didn't do your job. Think about that, guys. And all you said is, oh, we're gonna communicate and we're gonna do better, I've heard that crap for the last ten years, and you've not done better. If anything, you've gotten worse. And like this, this year contract, where we've got all these orange stuff parked out, where you guys wrote in all this lawyer, you're going language and stuff that you wanted, that's not gonna fly with us, we've got the amounts of what it costs, and you guys haven't done that in years. You haven't done the work, and that's why we're cutting it.
Mayor, Council, we, we certainly appreciate what you're.
Mayor, Council, we, we certainly appreciate what you're saying. Again, this is not the time or the place to air grievances. I think the time and place is with the, the empowered parties that, that the governing body asked to negotiate the terms and conditions of our contract. We have in, in one hundred percent good faith worked real closely, many meetings with, with city administration to come up with terms and conditions that were agreeable to both parties. We are certainly willing to continue doing so. The, the amendment that you have, we do, we, we, we have an issue with, we do not agree. And we will not execute the amendment as you have before you...
Did you make the statement that the parks didn't matter, we could give rid of that contract because that million dollars didn't matter to you guys?
The parks was by hundreds of thousands.
No, what, I, what, what, I can imagine that you are referring to is our first proposal when the city administration...
No, I'm referring to words right out of your mouth, David. That were overheard by a citizen talking to Edward. And you told Edward that that contract with the parks doesn't even matter, we could do without that money, it's no big deal. That the wastewater treatment trap was the one that you wanted, it's the only one that mattered.
The, the issue again, if, if I may repeat my, my, or if I may complete my statement. Our proposal that Matt referred to initially was when the city asked if we could shave three hundred thousand from our cost. Our proposal back to the city at that time was to remove the parts from our contract. In discussions, private discussions with my staff, I, I very well could have said that if, if the city would like to self-perform the parts, that is certainly amenable. That appears to be the majority of the issues and complaints. And, and as, as you, Mayor, I've been involved with this community for many years. I moved from my home and moved to Grants in nineteen ninety-five. I would, I spent over eight years serving this community as the project manager. And during that time, I feel like we did a very good job and I, and I also feel like we've done a very good job since. Now, if, if, if someone, anyone has, has, has an intent to focus on, on, on every little thing that is done wrong and I, I, I will also admit, there's some big things. But if that's all we focus on, we will never be happy individuals.
Five hundred and seventy-five days, David, on a fire hydrant?
To, to that, I...
That somebody's house can burn down, right there, buddy.
And if there, if it was, if, if the fire department was not able to respond because of our negligence, that is us, Mr. Mayor.
That's my fault.
I have, I have paid, I, I paid a claim when I was the project manager here where a house burned and the fire hydrant in front of the house did not work. We accept that responsibility.
That right there should've taught you something, David, then it shouldn't ever happen again that we shouldn't have a work order for five hundred and seventy-five days on a fire hydrant. Especially if it already happened under your watch before.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to debate any, anything. If there are specific issues that you would like to discuss, then that needs to take place.
That's a specific issue.
In a, in, in a civil give and take, that is not what can happen here. And, and we're, we, we are happy to discuss and happy to further define the terms and conditions of this amendment. We, we, we look forward to it. And, and, and we're making great progress and delivered an executable amendment to the city administration in the, on January seventh. City administration did not, or rejected...
There you go, we rejected it.
There's, that's what negotiations are for, we go back and forth until consensus is reached.
We better go back and forth, okay?
In October, I thought we had come up with what we both accepted. And then it was going before your legal counsel, we waited and waited for it to come back. When it came back, it had several new things in it that we had not agreed on and I took those out. You know, those hadn't been discussed before. And so the dollar amount is, the dollar amount that was last talked about was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two. So I came up with a more even two hundred and twenty-five thousand to get it a little bit, you know, not odd numbers. And the, what came back on January seventh was not what we had agreed on.
Never is.
If, if that's the case, then we, we misunderstood the intent and we did not get it right. That, that, that just means when Matt sent the email and, and...
Have you two sat down with David and Matthew over this contract?
We sat down with Matt and Edward.
Matt and Edward, not David?
Yes.
But you did not sit down with Edward?
Which contract, Mr. Mayor, are you referring to?
This one here? This contract we're negotiating right now, buddy.
Not this version we have not sat to discuss.
I, I have been involved with the negotiations from the onset. I, yes, we have all sat down together and had discussions. This particular version I did not see until January twenty-first while I was en route to Tucson. And was told then that it would be on your agenda on the twenty-third. I'm sorry, I, I, that's, that, from the twenty-first to the twenty-third is not sufficient time. And we have had time. And, and I can tell you that now, the, the amendment that you have before you, we will not execute as it's, as it's written. And, and we, we are absolutely committed to negotiate terms that will be agreeable to both parties.
Go ahead, Laura, say what you gotta say. I know where I'm at, man.
Well, we can, we can proceed with breach of contract. We have lots of documentation showing breach of contract. So if that's the route you wanna go, then we'll just do away with the whole contract. I, I was so embarrassed, I, I was up here till eleven-thirty, I don't know what night, because the council wanted documentation from the staff. I was up here till eleven-thirty copying stuff and this is what I could round up in, in my busy schedule. And I was sick to my stomach as a city manager that I have let this go on this long. Some, some serious things, some weekly calls. Counselor Padilla, before you were even councilman, you talked to me almost weekly about your concerns at the cemetery.
Yeah, I was on the board.
Yes. And you were here Friday while I was at the hospital with my mother when we got another concern and you tried to help my staff deal with it, another serious concern. The concerns come in weekly. Weekly, I get a couple of concerns. I, for Melissa, she could hire one person just to deal with the complaints that come in. And I, I feel really bad because you guys weren't here last time, but we care about the Jacobs staff, we have worked closely with them. But I'm an old school teacher and if my students or my children, I said, I told my staff or my husband are misbehaving, they're gonna get disciplined. He's looking around. But I'm just that way and, but I, I do care. Edward has been nothing but wonderful to me. His staff are wonderful to me. And so this is not a personal issue, this is a business issue. And I'm embarrassed to be the city manager and for the public to know that we've allowed a contractor, you know, to not do their job. And we're paying them taxpayer, I'm embarrassed. I, I, I'm ashamed of myself for allowing this to go on. When I came on five years ago, the mayor, yeah, he said, I want their contract. And I'm like, no, no.
Five years ago, guys.
My, my thing is you always give people a chance, you always give them a chance. And so we have. And things get better for a while and then they get bad again. And frankly, I'm exhausted, I'm tired of having to be out there and tell the Jacobs staff what's wrong in the parks. I'm tired of being out there... No, I'm tired of being out there at a major water leak on the east end of town and telling their staff, hey, the ground's open, don't you think we should put another valve here? So we don't have to shut everybody off. I'm just, I'm exhausted from babysitting yourself. I have all of my own staff to babysit. And, and our staff need, need reprimanding, they need coaching and mentoring and so we do the same for them. But I should not have to babysit your staff.
Got anything else?
No other comments, thank you.
Thank you.
I might comment detail that, Mayor, is I don't know who wrote this contract or who approved it years ago. But I'm against all this. We supply the gas, the vehicles, the equipment, the auto space and all that stuff. And we still have to pay them extra to do all this, that's my...
Where have I been in this contract since I got elected?
You know, the guys, Edward and Patrick and all those guys, the guys are no problem, you know. But this is my goat head.
You guys got anything?
Mayor, if I may, just, just one closing comment. Counselor Padilla, Vasquez and Williams and Honorable Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry, Reynolds. Please, we, we, we want to, the, the, you, you said it yourself. The, the team here cares about this community, I care about this community. I raised my daughters in this community, they both graduated from Grants High School. This is, this, this is not, I, no one is here trying to take advantage of anyone. If the, if, if the parks is a concern we've offered...
The whole contract is a concern. The parks don't have a single work order for five hundred and seventy-five days that might get somebody killed, David?
We, we, we can, we can certainly talk about that.
Wow!
That's, that, that, that is...
We could take over the parks today and do what needs to be done there. I'm talking about the rest of it that I've had to hire people to do because you guys couldn't keep up and do it, David? That's what this is all about right here.
I take, I take serious issue with that, but I would, I would just ask. You, you have empowered a, a, a staff, the city administration, to negotiate on behalf of the city. Share your concerns and, and have those enter into the negotiations. If you don't want the fuel, we'll take it out. If you don't want to provide the offices, we'll take it out. I have no issue with, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Counselor Padilla. I, I, I don't, if, if, if that is a, a, a goat head for you, let's get rid of it.
We haven't, we haven't the last...
Thank you. And you guys still are not doing...
When I was on the board for seven years, and I had to, we had meetings and I had to come here and tell Laura I need help. And we had different guys in the cemetery before.
Promise to support our week guy, we can never find him.
We talked about having one full-time employee, it didn't work out. It didn't work out. We had, let me go back a little bit. Raising of the headstones, that was a headache.
They still ain't done.
And then we got together with our staff and they said, we got a schedule, man. We got a schedule, we're gonna do section E this week, section B next week and stuff like that. You go with everybody, I still get complaints, people tripping over that.
Still ain't done it.
I mean, I'm not, you can go with me right now, I'll show you, you know.
I, 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 I'm not disagreeing, Counselor Padilla, and, and I just ask. Let's, let's find, find what is, what are the terms and conditions that will, will, will appease you and, and the, and the majority of the council?
We got that full-time guy at the cemetery that didn't work out. And they took him out of the cemetery and put him in the medium.
I, again, you know, you...
You go back and tell me that you want to work with us. I tried working, we, we told whoever, let's have a full-time guy, I approve.
Well, I'll tell you what, David, hang on, hang on.
I'm just trying to...
The one that's gonna negotiate this contract with you, you're talking to him right now, okay? They're not gonna do anything without my direction. I'm the chief executive officer of City of Grants, period, okay? And right now, you are under breach of contract and have been under breach of contract for years and years and years. What I'm trying to do here is save Edward and them, period. Instead of cutting them loose, because you're not helping them at all. You want to appease us. We don't wanna be appeased, we want you to do what we pay you to do. That's not simple.
I think Edward and the team would, would have a different opinion about my, my help. But again, it's, it's, we, we serve at the council's pleasure and we, we understand, we are a service provider and, and that's what we, we aim to do. And you have all remedies in your, within your authority. And we are, we're, we're here to serve and do what we can and I, and I think, and, and not to... We, we, we did not come to, to banter or, or debate. It was, we wanna make sure that you understand Jacobs as, as a firm is very interested in determining and negotiating terms, terms and conditions of this third amendment to the contract that will be amenable to everyone.
So in, in working on terms and stuff, when we work with contractors, we have a task that we're asking them to do. I don't, you know, I know they have to agree to, can we do the job or what to do the job you want? But I don't believe a contractor should tell us how it's gonna go.
That's...
I'm sorry, it's our money.
We're gonna get a raise no matter what happens.
You know, and I know there's some negotiating back and forth, but we're saying, this is what we need. And, and we're gonna have to pay what it's worth. I mean, we're not gonna try not to pay what it's worth, but I, I don't see...
We also gotta get the work that we pay for.
This is not where, you know, I don't know, I don't see where a contractor gets to tell us.
Well, it's been that way for years, for years. Because the previous city manager didn't wanna have to deal with all those employees so he turned it over to Jacobs and lets Jacobs deal with it. And all he's gotta do is pass a contract now. Oh yeah, we're gonna play free golf, we'll get a free meal and we'll approve another contract. And that's the way it was. When I came on the council, that's the way it was. When I got elected mayor, that's the way they tried to keep it. But that didn't fly, doesn't fly with anybody and it ain't about to fly now. Like I said, I'm not politically correct and never tried to be. If it's wrong, it's wrong, period.
So is the mayor gonna negotiate on the contract?
Let's see what they send back, you guys got thirty days. I mean, it doesn't take longer than thirty days to answer what we sent you. And if you don't wanna do it, that's fine. We'll go breach a contract and we'll just get out altogether and we'll take it over. The ball's in your court now, David.
It's me with him.
Okay, I'll be with him, you bet you will. That's the problem here, they've never bothered. Like this guy's already been here how long and he's never met me? Never called my phone to say, hey?
That's my fault, Mayor, I, yeah, every time he's been in town, I...
He should be here more often if he's in charge of the Grants team. Not every other week or, he should be here every day.
He's up here at least twice a week. And again, it's my fault, I hadn't...
No, it's not your fault, Edward, he's in charge, not you. He's your boss, right?
Correct.
Then it's not your fault, period. That's just the way it is, guys, if it's wrong, it's wrong. And you're not gonna be able to paint it to where it's right. And what we got going on here is wrong. And the best example I can come up with is five hundred and seventy-five days on a fire hydrant. You've got over a hundred thousand dollar inventory in your warehouse over there with brand-new fire hydrants laying there, I think there was eight of them, I counted. I just, I don't get that, guys. So what do you wanna do, David? You wanna rebut this? Or would you just prefer that we go breach a contract and end this and move on?
We, we will certainly respond to, to that.
On that note, guys, I'll entertain a motion to table this contract until they get it back to me within thirty days of today's date.
So I would like to make the suggestion that the mayor, on the council's behalf, can sign off on the contract. We need to get this done, we've been negotiating this since August. We, you know, we're, money's on the table, we're paying for things that are not happening. I would like for us not to keep stalling.
And that's always happened.
And I feel like that's, that's what's occurred is we're just stalling.
Back and forth. Any questions?
And to be perfectly honest with you, I, Mark and I... And to be perfectly honest with you, I, Mark and I can follow up on breach of contracts. We don't need the council's approval for that.
That's right, we don't need the council's approval for that part of it.
So, we're gonna take the politics out of this and we're gonna do what's right by the citizens.
And that's what I've been saying since I got elected mayor, guys. Nothing but that. And like I said it a thousand times, if you don't like my delivery, sorry. I'm exactly what God made me. God in the United States Marine Corps. So, can I have a motion to table this for 30 days? Can I make a motion?
I second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On that note, comments from the council, Sidney.
I'm in the process of adopting a dog from the shelter. He's kinda old, little lame. And the shelter staff have been very, very nice. The other thing is for the people of the community, you know, shove your egos sometimes, you know, so that things can get done, not like this evening. That's all, oh, it's been, it's been four years last time I sit here. So long.
Right? Brad?
So, I talked to you guys about this, I don't know if it can be done or not, excuse me, but just look at it. I talked to the representatives, senators, I talked to you about this. I have a truck stopped in the, in the east end of town, a small one. More than a day, it's smaller, it's calm than others. And they got one each end and they all was full. Somebody told me, "You're gonna take it over from Milan?" "No, I'm not taking anything from Milan." "You go down to Albuquerque."
Look at the casinos.
Look at the casinos, they're full. You meet a ton of them trucks. Look at Walmart. We have a nice small pilot, we start a little cafe there, we have a few employees that, you know, economic development or somebody, I don't know who talked to you, you know. Get it going, we got plenty of room right behind the Walgreens or whoever. You know, guys, let's do something.
They keep raising taxes on gas the way they are, they're gonna be driving around our state.
That's okay, but they'll be driving to there, I don't care how much they raise it, they're gonna go through it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Laura, you got anything?
I do not.
Chief, the school has money for another resource officer at La Salamitos.
What can you do here, Mayor?
We don't, we don't at this point to match that, what I was told.
What I was told is they're paying for the whole damn thing, all we had to pay for the insurance.
It doesn't work that way. The $50,000 that they've given us even for the first resource officer, only, I think the city's pitching in 26,000 when you count the.
Off time for the summer, you don't like this stuff?
No, yeah.
Okay.
Equipment.
Yeah, there are benefits and all that, the benefit package. So, it's not just 50K, it's also including. So, I talked to the city manager here about a month ago. Our intent coming up for the budget proposal for July would be to include that extra to get that next officer. I talked to Max about that also and so, we're, I've got an officer.
Cause I'm getting pressure from the school board, that's what I'm getting the pressure from, okay?
Yes, sir.
From the board.
And yeah, we definitely would like to have that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
If it, I mean, I think that school needs it worse than the high school does.
Right.
Okay, that's how bad that school's got. La Salamitos has gotten insane out of control.
Mayor, did you, Sidney, I.
Go ahead, Brad.
On that, Lauren, speaking here, talking.
We're working on that, that's gonna be a state battle for.
I know, your team owns.
Have any claims probably there?
No, they're all retired.
Yeah.
No, we're still working on it, I'm pressing Clemente and Ariana.
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah, it's insane. I mean, when you got new people that moved to town worried about crossing Santa Fe Avenue. You know, we need to stow it down. Well, that's all, you know, I left California, Sidney, because the only people I could find in California that I liked were tourists or Marines that came from someplace else to California.
Thank you, Dean.
So, my question is, why would you stay in a place where you don't even like the people that live here? I mean, because that was, question was proposed.
I'm vested in it.
Well, I was vested in California and I left, I got the hell out of there because they were crazy.
I'm not leaving, I wanna keep you company.
You wanna, you wanna keep us miserable? Like most of the progressives, all pissed off and miserable all the time? I understand now. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting.
I make a motion.
Second, my favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you for serving, Sidney.